It says we're going to be talking.
We were talking.
All right, I've got 5:30 PM. Let's go to the screening to order again with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That will be the whole form of the show. Steve Harris, Carol Loncomb, here. Jay Jones?
Here.
Lexi Murphy, here. Gina Unrell?
Here.
We still have a forum. Okay, session. Attendants of guests, we have our guests signed in, correct? And would anyone like to speak at this open forum opportunity to address the council? Yes?
Honestly, just a short comment. I'm coming back after really being God since about 1971. Sort of a long absence from here. And I was just wondering if there can be anything organized or done to help revive pride in the community. So that's just a thought that I had. I've noticed how the streets are not swept clean. They look really awful. It looks very trashy. And a lot of lawns that are being mown, they just are trimming the weeds. And so we've got, I know you have this eight-toe inch thing that you're talking about weeds. So I don't know if that is included in that. But I've got some neighbors that have some lovely thistles growing at the edge of their lawns that I would love to see God. So it's just, I would love to be a part of and help in any way I can revive pride in the community.
Would you identify yourself for those of you who don't have?
Patrice, he won't.
Patrice.
No. Nice of you.
So you're probably, you're speaking later? Or you're speaking as a resident as well? Whoever's.
I will, I'll just speak to one thing and maybe it's come too late. But I just want to encourage. So there's been a lot of frustration that seems to have been aired about an inquiry that was made about parking on Grossbeck. I just want to just say that that really started with me. I asked a question of different people, including council people about that because traffic was being restricted and because that entire street, except for that one block of Grossbeck, is parking on one side only. I realized that that's opened up a kingdom of worms. However, I would still encourage our city leaders to pursue that because regardless of emotions and feelings and some people feeling like they might have been attacked or misrepresented or that their right to park is being impinged on, we don't have a right to impede traffic. And so if I park my car in such a way that prevents traffic from flowing, that is impeding the city function. So I just want to encourage that we keep researching that. It sounds like from our own fire chief that there's concerns about the width of our streets and the congestion on our streets. And addressing that shouldn't have to be so controversial. It's living in communities, so there are gives and takes. And so I want to applaud those of you who have been working at that and have taken some kicks for that. I'm sorry if I kick a horn and says that's not what I was trying to do. I was just trying to keep traffic flowing in the neighborhood where I live. So that's all I have.
Got three of you left? John, no? No, you can say? Okay. One, none, and? Nothing? Okay, you're sure?
Aren't you lucky?
Careful.
End next.
Okay, all right. Thank you for attending.
Abby, nothing?
We are at item number six to approve the agenda for tonight. I don't think we have any other adjustments needed at this time, changes. Does someone else think there's something?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Carol's made a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Do we have a second? Jay has provided a second. We have a motion by Carol and a second by Jay to approve tonight's agenda. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, hearing that, we'll call for a vote of all in favor of approving tonight's agenda. Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. You're all ayes. Motion carries. Agenda approved. Your next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the 8/16/23 regular meeting, which I know we do have a correction or two to make to that. Whoever wants to introduce that?
I've got one correction, and that was the motion by Murphy and second by Unrell. And we didn't say we had all ayes or all nays or what we had. And I know it was all ayes. So we have to add that on that paragraph there. That was the only, I think, correction that I noticed.
Seven paragraph there? Is that correct?
Yeah, whatever.
I got seven. Okay, that's what I got. Anyone else find anything? Proven art revised minutes. Okay, so Carol has pointed out the addition, the actual roll call vote is not listed at the end of paragraph seven. They were all ayes, no nays. So that will need to be added. Do we, is that your motion to approve them with that addition? Or are we waiting for that, for further corrections?
I'll make a motion to do that with that correction.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion by Carol and a second by Jean to approve the minutes as presented with the addition of paragraph seven at the end to identify the results of the roll call vote as all ayes, no nays. Do we have any other discussion, clarification, questions? All right, we'll have a motion and a second to approve the minutes with the addition of the roll call vote at the end of the fire department contract. So all in favor of accepting the minutes with that addition, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes. Motion carries. Revised minutes approved. Paying the claims with the long holiday weekend, we do have an additional page in front of you. Additional claims as well as, also purple page. Very convenient.
And then the additional ones from?
This one here presented. Anyone else? So you have your standard claims report. Anyone else have questions? Michelle or otherwise? So this is the, well, just these, out of this.
That R1A3 country question, that was close to what, or was that exactly what they did?
And 12 and 16?
It could have been too far.
Was it 12 and 16? Okay. I mean, one was 12. They did one way enough. They had to get rid of it. It was 16.
So it was pretty close.
So I think, yeah.
Okay.
So the right.
He cleaned up those trees old before I worked too.
Seventeen.
Okay.
Yeah, so. No, they did a great job. Really did.
What is that? You guys blue box pH bottle for $10 for matches and storage?
That's for chemicals we have to buy for testing water.
Where did David Collins pour two yards of concrete? Was it the car station or?
We, he had a cement truck coming and we, he just put two yards of concrete on for us.
Okay.
And we poured it at Mill Creek Clinic.
Okay.
Okay. I thought maybe it was that one in front of Tisha's office there. That was, that was you guys, you know, last week, did that yourself? That cement in front of Tisha a while back? That one that was kind of a little.
Yeah, we poured, we poured that cement.
Okay, thanks Kelly.
Because he was getting a truck.
Okay, thank you.
No, and I have a question about the thing with the child and country thing, but it sounds like we don't mess with that, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the payment of claims with the additional.
Okay, then there's also the additional Marcus news.
Okay.
This is for the minutes that were submitted late. So we sent them to local sire review and they printed them. And then I contacted Callie at Times on Monday and asked them, I told them we didn't need it printed, but they said it was too late. So we were, we were billed for that.
Did they print minutes in the paper? Didn't we tell them we didn't need them printed on Monday? And then it was too late. She said she already had it in her paper.
But they were, she told them that she couldn't get them in.
That was on Thursday or Friday.
Yeah. Thank you. Sorry, not this week. Are you on the chamber? Why did Jim Marie disrupt your work, Mary?
That's what she asked you.
So yeah, so 136 was already paid. 13601 was paid for that batch of minutes. And now the request is for 16883 for those minutes, which would then make it a total of 30484.
Did you already make a motion, Jane, or did you stop?
She made a motion.
Can I withdraw my motion?
Were you including that one?
Yeah, I can withdraw for help.
You're good to that. All right. So we have a motion to approve payment of all claims, including all additional claims by Jean.
So then you're approving the one for this?
For the Marcus News one, this one here, two, one, they told them. No, then say, then exclude that one.
I thought you were saying. Oh, I meant these additional claims, the other ones.
Yeah, and exclude and say exclude this one, because that's additional claims.
Yeah. So purple pages, claims. If you're clarification, is that correct?
That's the one that I meant. That's the purple page.
And then what do you want to do with Marcus? Will you want to discuss that later or what do you want to do? Yeah, can we discuss that?
Can we discuss it now? You can finish your motion whichever you choose. This is the time for it. Yes, you have a motion on the table.
I just want to include these for now.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Jean and a second by Jay to approve payment of claims as presented on the purple pages, the original claims report and the additional claims. Do we have any other questions regarding this motion and second? Okay, then we'll call for a vote all in favor of approving payment of claims as presented on the claims report in purple and the additional claims also on purple paper. Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. Ayes, motion carry. These claims to be paid. So we would like to discuss the additional claims paper presented in front of you.
Well, I think it was kind of a mix-up on both sides. Because you guys felt you had to get them in about 15 days, which is whatever the rule is. And that's where you were going to be late. So when she couldn't get them in, you just got a hold of the review. That's the story I'm understanding. And then when she called and told her on Monday, she had already put them in. But she could have called two. So I feel it was a little bit messed up on both sides. I would consider paying half of the bill and call it good. Because we've already paid one bill.
So is the total bill?
That's the 3342 or just the 16883? The 16883 is what we owe Marcus News. Okay. And then we, we paid the 13601. 3601. To local sire review.
Gotcha.
You see on the last page, there are almost those ads for the couple more that we have to point and ask.
Also with all that, that's why the, that's what's different. Okay.
On that last page, I'm just confused too. Yeah, it's in there.
Okay, yep.
But this email from her, it was on Monday, June 26 at 12:15, to Michelle says, "Thank you. Sorry, not this week. Are you on the chamber? Why did Jim Marie disrupt your work, Mary?" So she just, she said it wasn't going to go in on Monday, right? Am I reading this right?
Well, not this week. It would be the week prior.
The Friday she said wouldn't.
Yeah.
She couldn't get it in anymore. She was fault.
And they said we couldn't have it, so that's why they weren't looking for somebody else.
We felt we had to have it published within that 15 days. That's. Right, that's why. So I feel it was a miscommunication kind of both ways.
Yep.
We should have probably called it immediately when the review said they could do it, but we didn't. Probably wanted to see it printed to make sure it was going to be printed. I don't know. So, and then when you told her no, then she said she already had them. But she could have called you on Monday too to make sure you didn't need it printed. I don't know. I don't know if she sees the review or not, Mary, or Rich. I guess that's why I suggested I would consider paying half of it.
So that is a total of 8441. I don't know if that's going to be agreeable or not.
I would agree with you.
Okay. Kind of consensus? Do we want to make, you want to make an additional?
We'll not make a motion then that we will consider paying half of it, which you said was 8441.
Forty-two.
Forty-one.
Oh, 84.
Eighty-four dollars. Does that be a half of 16883, correct? Is that?
Yep.
Would it be $84 even?
Eighty-four dollars and 42 cents. Forty-one and a half cents.
Forty-two.
Let's go 42 cents.
Yeah, 8442.
So I'll make a motion to pay that amount.
I'll second.
So Carol's made the motion to offer to pay 8442 toward this invoice 106026 for 16883. Jean has seconded that motion. Do we have any other discussion? Does anyone understand the motion and the second?
Yes.
Okay, then we can call for a vote. All in favor of approving payment of 8442 toward invoice 106026 for Marcus News, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, we have Jay, nay, and three ayes. Carol, Jean, and Lexi, correct? Right, so that passes as approved. Okay, we have two, item nine on the agenda. Approve new ambulance personnel. Ian Oliver and Miranda Draper have been presented to us. Do you have anyone from ambulance here today? Say more about them.
We don't have sheets on them like we do in the fire department?
No, she just emailed me and asked me to put these two. I don't know.
Is that Ian Oliver? He's already on the fire department. Is he the one that works that aprision?
No, he's a high school senior, I believe.
Did he graduate?
He just graduated?
Did he graduate?
No, he's him and E D years ago.
In U of L. Yeah.
So you have to be?
Nope, we just have to pass class.
Do you have to be a certain age?
I don't know. EMT, 18, isn't it?
Do you have to be in the E M S at 18? Like you can't do anything when you're 16 or anything like that, can you?
Art is hard.
Fire department, you just can't enter buildings.
Right.
I didn't know what about ambulance. Do you have to be 18 or can you be younger than that?
I always thought, because I remember when Caitlin, when she applied for ambulance, we had a sheet.
Yeah.
And most of that changed. It was 18.
And they probably are, because they probably have taken the course. I've had years in special.
You can take the course early and then if you're D M P.
And then their senior year, yeah.
Yeah.
You might not be able to.
The EMT takes special training, right?
They're correct. They're asking to be on ambulance personnel. Just to be an ambulance person. Saving their qualifications specifically, that one. It's all over on their board to figure out.
So you know how they've taken a class or are they planning to?
I know it's.
He has?
He has. I hear some of that. Close from the school, I think, close to that. And I think Miranda, I don't know. I think Miranda was just going to drive. She was off into driving.
So you can separate those into two, if you'd like, or make them as a group. I don't know that it matters.
Has the ambulance approved them already?
Yeah, they're requesting more. Do you feel they have? I know for sure on Ian because I got hours from him from also.
Okay, that's a bill.
I would think we have to have sheet, because do we keep sheets on them?
I had to get all the text documentation from Ian before I should pay them.
So you got a sheet. But do we keep a file on everybody? We have an ambulance file, fire department and all that. So we don't have any other personnel. I just, I mean, I'm not against it. I just think we need to stay consistent.
So have they already been working with the ambulance, do you know? I know Ian has.
Okay.
Seen him in a few calls.
Okay.
Well, I guess we can make a motion, but we would like to see if we're supposed to get paperwork.
Especially like see what they're driving or.
Right, so we know what, I mean, not them.
We have to be really cautious.
Okay. We should still, I think, have paperwork or.
And she's in high school yet too, or something. She drove away last year, I think.
Carol, you want to go over here?
I'm thinking that.
Yes.
Come on over.
It's really.
I will make the motion that we approve Ian Oliver and Miranda Draper. But if we could have paperwork, that would be great too.
I'll second.
Oh, I can even go here.
Okay, Lexi's made the motion. And Jean has seconded to approve both Ian Oliver and Miranda Draper to join the ambulance crew with the addition of their paperwork.
Careful when you sit down.
Provided as well. Do we have any other discussion related to that? Okay, hearing that, we can call for a vote. All in favor of approving new ambulance personnel of Ian Oliver and Miranda Draper, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carries. We'll get you whatever paperwork or documents to pass on. Okay, item 10. Approve the O'Brien County Snow Tractors Club groom trails route. This is, I believe, a pretty regular thing that has been happening for several years, I understand. We should have that.
How much is it again?
What? How much is it? There's no.
They just want commission.
Oh, they just want.
They just drag.
Yeah.
Use.
So they can connect the rest of the county, whatever.
So where do they go?
Get the town out. Does this leave the town?
They come into lanes and, and come into Mill Creek and then they go across the, over road tracks.
It's kind of hard to see item 10 here.
I think they got a map in here.
They do.
Doesn't it have a map?
Yeah, it's hard to see. It is. Yeah, it doesn't really, yeah.
It's highlighted, but it's kind of.
Where you keep holding on and stuff. Yeah, you keep holding on, but yeah. We'll make the motion that we approve the groom trail route.
I'll second.
Okay, we've had a motion by Lexi and a second by Jay to approve the O'Brien County Snow Tractors Club groom trails route request. Do we have any other discussion related to this agenda item? Okay, now we can call for a vote. All in favor of approving the O'Brien County Snow Tractors Club groom trails route request, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. That's all ayes. Motion carries. Route approved. I don't think that one, Stephen, though. All right, we are to item 11, the resolution to accept the electric facilities construction and reimbursement agreement with NIPCO to replace the old 69 kilovolt transmission with a right transmission switch, which is approximately 77-ish thousand dollars estimated and not payable until middle of April of 2025. So we will have time to include that in the budget. You mentioned it lasts the time. We talked about it. So now you have the official paperwork in your packet.
When's the last time? You have any idea, Kelly? Have any idea?
No.
Been a long time?
Before my time.
Well, and you've been here what, 10?
10 years.
So. I'm guessing they know it's needed, so we really have a lot of choice.
No, we don't.
And we surely don't want to lose one person.
I'll make the resolution that we accept the electric facility contract and reimbursement agreement with NIPCO to replace the old 69 kV transmission switch.
I'll second that.
Or did you, did Jay do it?
Go ahead.
Whoever wants it. Would you care? You have to care.
Okay, you can be way too nice, Jay.
Look at me.
Who wants it?
I pulled our press lead forward.
Going twice.
What do you want, Jay?
Yeah, she did.
All right, Carol it is. All right, so Lexi's introduced the resolution and Carol has provided a second to accept the electric facilities construction and reimbursement agreement with NIPCO as stated before you. You have the additional material right here, the full text provided. Does anyone have any questions related to this agreement? And let's send you on hearing. Let's call for a roll call vote. Carol Loncomb?
Yes.
Jay Jones?
Aye.
Lexi Murphy?
Yes.
Gina Unrell?
Yes.
Steve is absent. So that is four ayes and one absence. So that is a affirmative vote. Recorded. Got that recorded. All right, so we're here. The resolution to approve the WAPA contract for MRES to administer renewable energy certificates for the city of Palina. This is also something they've been doing, I believe, in the ambulance.
This is one you sent for, you know.
Oh, yeah, this is a long one. Did you hit the bill?
Yeah.
The secret one.
You did not.
It's an L, it's not an I.
No, it's an L.
Right.
Yeah, it's I sent it.
Okay. Well, some people think it's an I.
See, and I did look at it. When I seen this one in here, I thought, oh, that's one of the same. I'm not kidding.
When did you send it?
Last week.
Yeah, no. And it would have gone, came from deputy clerk, correct?
Right.
Okay, I'll have to look at, I guess, my junk papers and.
I have, but I didn't look at it.
I thought it was really long.
I was just saying, 2050.
We didn't copy it, but.
That's how long it will last?
And this is the one that Tisha's has reviewed and has said we need to present to you.
Is that the one you laid on the desk the other day when I was in here? No, that one, no, no, never mind. So what are we named for this?
I don't think anything. I think it's just a contract to get energy through, isn't it?
Oh, okay.
For them to handle the renewable energy.
Because it used to be NIPCO, but now it's MRES.
Because we have NIPCO and WAPA, right?
Yes, it's a western area.
And MRES and NIPCO.
Yes, the two.
MRES and WAPA.
I'll introduce the resolution to approve WAPA contract for MRES to administer renewable energy certificates for the city of Palina, Iowa.
I'll second. Motion or introduction of the resolution to approve the WAPA contract for MRES to administer renewable energy certificates for the city of Palina, Iowa by Jean and second by Lexi. Does anyone else have any questions or want to review that document further at this time? Okay, then we will call for a roll call vote. Carol Loncomb?
Aye.
Jay Jones?
Aye.
Lexi Murphy?
Aye.
Gina Unrell?
Aye.
And absent Steve, Carol, Jay, Jean, Lexi, in front of absent Steve, so that is an approval. Get that signed and sent back. Okay, item 13. Carol, I feel like you should talk about this topic because you were just in the.
Well, I definitely want that back soon.
Yeah. West facing window treatments, as you know, we've discussed them multiple times here. You can see the vertical lines are looking really impressive tonight.
Can you, I think you talked to the gentleman on the, yeah.
So we would take these away?
Those will be gone.
Okay.
But now it just got thickened. Is she measuring just from the bomb? Because if we were going to tint those.
Yeah, she's just measuring the bomb.
Okay, because I don't remember if I told her that. I told her we were tinting, but I would think so.
Well, the dimensions are in there.
I will recheck with her if we decide to.
I'm pretty sure she's.
So she has the cassette topper and I wouldn't really just.
No, because that'd be, that'd be really hard to do.
Yeah, which is what I know. Yeah, which is what I mean.
So we can just do all these, just like the verticals are now. And do you have that with you? Here? If anybody wants it.
Oh. Box over there.
So are we tint just up there or up there?
And then the tint would just be up there, so that's, that's those four on us.
Not though. This will just have the blinds in this room and the loudroom.
And then, so that is like two hundred and sixty and two hundred and eighty dollars, it's five, total of five hundred and forty, not the whole amount, at least, or approximately that, we have the highest of taxes in there.
So and so.
It's not just one set, huh?
Top two.
Just the upper one.
Just the top ones over there.
It just says top, all the way through, there's.
But which ones are they? On your sheet?
Yeah, well, I've highlighted, that doesn't have to be, it's made copies, but.
Just tell us which ones they are.
Oh, yeah, that's. It's thirty by thirty, thirty-one by thirty and thirty by thirty. They're all the same squares, because they need to have a square to cut it out, even though it's in an angle.
That's the one you guys who kept.
Yeah.
Yep.
Is that, let's see, and much, approximately sixty-five or seventy, depending on the size, the big ones. They're seventeen, the little ones look like sixty-five.
So, and we're gonna do the loudroom, the top also?
Four, yeah.
And what did you say it was again, Mike?
They're about sixty-five or seventy each square, based on the size, so sixty-five times four and seventy times four gives you a total of five hundred and forty dollars approximately, all cap, tab, tax and there. As well, but it drops considerably from this amount.
Well, this come out, I'm making a budget, are we okay?
This should just be your public.
Federal fund, probably.
Are we approving both, the tint and the blinds? Are we gonna do separate?
Well, that's, I'm waiting for the motion to do.
And this is, this is how much this is gonna cost for allow and this room, is there blinds over there?
We're not doing.
We're not doing blinds.
No, only the blinds in here and they're gonna be, if you went in the library, they're like that, we've just got more of a color, kind of a brown, we thought it would look nice as a brick and.
Go with the green.
Whatever. Yeah, someday this green will be gone, I hope. But, um, yeah. So I'll make a motion to approve the tinting in both the loudroom and here in the council chambers and then also the shades for in here.
With which company?
The shades are in TM USA.
Shades are here.
The other one is.
And the tinting is with the. The other one.
Window fashions?
Yeah.
Window fashions is.
Is the blinds.
Is the blinds, yes. Both up there.
And just the tops of those for best.
Called screen shades, seven forty dollars plus.
Yeah.
Whatever. I'll second that.
Okay, so Carol has made the, and that's for both, correct? Windows, shades and tinting and shades are here.
Shades, yeah. Yep.
Okay, so we've had the motion by Carol and a second by Jean, correct? To approve tinting of the tops of windows in the loudroom and the council chamber and to approve the window fashions estimate for the lower shades here to a similar product, really, that is in the library. Do we have any other discussion or questions related to this motion and second? Okay, and we, hearing that, we can call for a vote. All in favor of approving the tinting, the tops of the loudroom and council chambers and adding the window screen shade to the council chambers, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carries. You want to have Michelle handle, reaching out to her?
I've got her number, I can, it doesn't make any difference to me, I've given, we've got it too. I told you to let her know.
I know we want some.
Yes. Well, that's why she's called a couple of times.
Okay.
I think she's ready to order.
Okay, we are to item fourteen, to officially appoint Michelle as city clerk. I'll make the motion that we appoint Michelle Wilson as city clerk.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Lexi and a second by Carol to approve the appointment of Michelle Wilson as the city clerk.
Are you ready for that?
Need you been doing that? Have you been doing that yet? Do we have to give her an office?
Yes, that's what I'm finding here.
It's an official role.
We can appoint or do you have to appoint Michelle?
Pardon?
Brenda.
I think it's council.
It's council.
That we just.
Just wondering.
Oh, yeah. Point or signing or this role.
Okay.
Michelle, where is that?
Does that mean like Alex's name will be now just, we definitely change to deputy clerk?
That would be a separate action, which would have to come with council.
Maybe we should have that.
Hold on.
From deputy to.
How long is she getting?
We've got to say.
Almost four months.
Four months. Do we wait six months until the six months?
I think that'd be a bit late.
Yeah.
These are six months.
Okay, it's prescribed. Okay. Want to read it out loud if we do this officially? Are you sure I have thing?
You have to read it?
We're at, we're right here.
I, my name.
I. I, Michelle Wilson Dozal, I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the constitutional state of Iowa, that I will faithfully and partially, to the best of my ability, discharge all duties of the office of the city, the city clerk in Palina as now or here and after required by law.
Okay. I have my offer for you.
We do ask really all.
Yeah, we had to all for a vote. I'm like, I'm gonna go.
Oh, we gotta vote for votes.
Yeah, all right, undo that.
They get official.
All right, so all in favor of approving Michelle Wilson as city clerk, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. That's all ayes.
No, you didn't make the decision again?
We should.
One more time. With feeling.
We don't believe it the first time, so.
All right, item fifteen, select a citywide garage sales weekend date and it goes in hand and handle at the curb side fall cleanup date.
Is this, uh, some, like the city, we've never done this in the past, have we?
Not the garage sales.
For a while.
Some of the towns. I know, but some people always put them over like a jamboree.
It was over jamboree before, was it?
I think, yeah, and it wasn't something that.
Certain jamboree.
Yeah, we had that one time.
When, it was the fourth of July, maybe, too? I don't know.
I know they've done it since I've been here.
Was it, did the city do it or did the chamber do it? That's what I guess, that's what it was.
We've had it before.
We've had them, but I don't know who was in charge or who set it up. No clue.
A lot of other towns do it with the, in this order for this area reasons, so that you have their garage sale, they have the chance to sell their stuff and then they put it out and then.
The one that's left over, you just put on the grid.
Number isn't available, it's picked up today's later, so she was able to get dates. We had, what, October sixth, seventh and eighth for the garage sale weekend, six, seven, eight, and then October ninth, Monday, could be pickup.
October?
And that works with them or haven't you tried that?
Yes, it works with dates.
That sounds good to me.
So do we just advertise this and say, do they have to get anything from us?
Six, seven, eight for the garage.
Other towns usually just put an address on the list and make a list of them and put it up in places.
In places, okay, so everybody knows, and then you get flyers, so you know where to go.
They're stretching them all to town.
Well, I think that would be nice, so if you could have them at like Casey's and grocery stores and stuff, people could pick up flyers so they know where the addresses are.
Yeah.
That's my suggestion.
I'm gonna go through Facebook.
Facebook would be good.
City website.
Yeah.
So, that sounds appealing to anyone?
I'll make the motion that we do this citywide garage sale weekend, October sixth, seventh and eighth, and then like curb side of cleanup on pickup on Monday the night.
Since I have those as two agenda items, let's get them.
Oh, okay, sorry. Select the citywide garage sale, October sixth, seventh and eighth.
Okay, I have a motion from Lexi, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Jay has seconded. So Lexi and Jay have made the motion presented to you for approval to choose a citywide garage sales weekend as October sixth, seventh and eighth of twenty twenty-three. Do we have any other discussion? Okay, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the citywide garage sales weekend to be October sixth, seventh and eighth, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carries. Now, if you would like to give the next motion.
I make a motion that we do the fall cleanup date, October ninth, Monday.
And we're gonna do it the same way where they sign up, so they know.
Virtual floor.
Virtual flags.
Virtual.
Like the virtual flags again.
Yes.
And you can only put it out?
Well.
Day or two before?
Probably the garage sale weekend, it'll be a little.
A couple of days.
Put it out.
Two days. Three days. We can, yeah.
Probably. Couple of days. Not now, in other words, not now, people.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Lexi and a second by Jean to choose the curb side fall cleanup date of Monday, October ninth. Do we have any other questions or discussion on this agenda item?
So our garage sales then are on Sunday, Saturday and Friday?
Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Friday, Saturday.
And the fall pickup is Monday the night.
Okay, because I wasn't paying attention if those were the days.
Yeah, Friday is the sixth, October sixth, seventh, day.
Can I have a question on that? I know I'm gonna be out of order, so shut up, Jay.
No, I didn't say anything.
I know, but you usually call me out of order. If you're gonna have a garage sale, do you want us to bring that to the city hall so that you can make a map or what do you want?
You just sort of.
The address would be good. Just like stick pickup, you just call in there and leave your address and then I'll let it go.
And give the address, okay.
It may be, it may be a brief.
You can add it, yeah, maybe.
I know in different places, they all, sorry, out of order. You can put it on there and it's helpful because it's advertising, but doesn't necessarily mean that you can't have a garage sale, but it will be advertised by the city and public.
Yes. Correct.
Don't need to charge.
True, yeah.
Yep. Right.
So we should bring, if we're having a garage sale, let Michelle know so she has our address.
So we have some flyers that we're gonna do.
I think they could have left in the Casey's that last time.
I think, well, will we be doing another flyer like for the fall?
It's just, it's up right then, yeah, it comes out right then.
We have to do it the end of September then, or sometime earlier, so that makes that, that we.
Put it on the four corner board too.
Yeah, right.
Oh, yeah.
Telegram.
Put it on the, just put it up to remind people of the garage sale too.
Yeah, so that they, and that they let me know, so we can make.
Is there something that you can put on or attach something to the city bill?
Actually, I could put a note on, I can, well, the next one will have to run out though. It's in the year of September, which is October ninth, right? And then I can still write down the bill up, true.
It will be coming up, yeah, at the end of this.
I mean, trying to make it a little bit bigger, I don't know, or I'm, I'm really limited.
It's a little like.
Okay, but I mean, there's maybe a small little note or something right there, maybe, yeah.
People know it's something different.
Garage sales or.
Just if you put the dates maybe, you'll have calls in.
Probably. They read the mail. And so Lexi, your first, yes, we'll put that line on there, get the word out, good ideas. I'll get Abby. Any other discussion before we vote?
I think.
So on the next.
Special things too.
You can put them right on the bill. We're not putting out one of those newsletters, you can do that.
That, I believe, is the next one, is October, it's for October, November, December, so we would be mailed with that bill as well.
Yeah, put that on there too.
So I should be plenty covered if they read it. All right, Jean, it's better. Okay, if we have any other input, you know, want to provide further direction, otherwise we can call for a vote. All in favor of approving the curb side fall cleanup date as Monday, October ninth, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, one absent, motion carries.
And then we'll still have the same rules, they got paid if they got certain things and all that stuff, like your.
Okay, now we are to the third reading to item seventeen, on the admit a third reading to amend the ordinance pertaining animal control, vicious animal duty of restraint and the penalties. As we have further discussed, you go with another copy again in front of you. The items that are different, pressure.
Have you had anything, Michelle?
Did you call, anything?
Nothing, had anybody, anyone else or problems?
Anything?
Do we have to hold thing? For the, do you need to bring it all the way?
This one's upside down, it's like made, I'm hoping yours isn't.
It probably is.
It's just the way that when I put it two sided on the front.
Oh, that's, that's, really, that's weird.
I know. Well, it's to introduce the third reading, you need to read the all capital portion at the top.
I will enter this. Ordinance, amending the code ordinances of the city of Palina, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to animal control and protection.
And Jean has introduced the third reading of the ordinance amending the code ordinances related to amending provisions pertaining to animal control and protection. Lexi, second?
Yes.
We've got a motion by Jean, a second by Lexi to introduce this third reading of the ordinance. The ordinance related pertaining to animal control and protection as revised in front of you and previously in the other two comments. Do we have any other questions related or clarification to this item? All right, call for roll call vote. Carol Hongkum?
Aye.
Jay Jones?
Aye.
Lexi Murphy?
Aye.
Jean Unrow?
Aye.
Carol, Jean, Jay and Lexi were affirmative. And absent. Steve, so that means we have passed the third reading, this is ordinance upon publication will now be in effect. All right, to reports. I was hoping to get ahold of the DOT to ask how our project is going, but I haven't heard anything, no, and I didn't call made, so to find out how they were doing out there, if we're still on track for our November deadline, I might have some news, but.
Well, all the big equipment's gone.
I know, it's kind of quiet there.
I think we're getting close.
There's a rumor, the day before the food approaches and it's three weeks. Everybody can drive on, that's what's happening.
So that's, we're waiting for the cure or something, I see.
Anybody down the off road? To the north?
Some people do.
I did it the other day.
Yeah.
What did you do?
There's a bridge down low.
There's that little bridge to the north? And you can pull into the field.
Oh, and they go around it?
Yeah.
Yeah, and come up and.
That's how people go to Grandville to eat and stuff.
Really?
Well, I did not know that.
I didn't know that either.
But I have to go.
Yeah, there's a little bridge down there.
Don't take your good vehicle though.
Oh.
Take a pickup.
Not after a rain, a hard rain.
Oh, yeah.
Don't go after a rain.
You guys are worse than teenagers.
Any other airport updates? I don't really have any else, I guess, at this point, so we can pass and Tisha's not here, so that lets pass the torch to you, Kelly.
Uh, Kayden passed his module B for his journeyman recommendations. Overall, well done, skills final and confident in Kayden's ability to perform these tasks. He displayed the doubt to need to progress in the program and move on to module C, so if anybody wants to read the rest of the stuff I have.
All right. Perfect. How many modules are there?
Yes, I'll sign it.
Five modules.
And he's how many then, three?
Two, I have three.
Three of them, he's got that. Good, wow.
Booking it.
Yeah, he's doing well.
He'll scroll down here too.
And how about, um, anything on Josh on his?
How's that new, new guy?
He's doing all right.
Yeah, so will he be wanting to take the test or anything like that?
Yeah, we told, well, we wanted him to take it, we said.
Yeah, he's gotta be here six months before he can take it. Yeah, he's gotta be here six months before he can take it.
Okay.
On your list here, it says digger truck is gone, is that the?
The old digger truck is gone?
That had that new chassis under it that we were, or is that? The, you mean the one that holds something? Didn't we, we're gonna keep that to, uh, put a dump truck body on it?
I was told multiple things, but it's gone, so. Uh, painted lines at school, did storm cleanup, clean intakes. Cleaned the poly injector in well four, pushed up tree pile and burn, meter reads, read in, read outs. Pulled weeds at the park. Locates, replaced metal grate by movie theater. Replaced stop sign at South Rutledge and East Day from the storm. Had a hydraulic hose break on the bucket truck, fixed that. Cleaned the pickups, painted crosswalks for school, patched spots on top of the reservoir. Took down overhead electric and put in two services over on Grill Spec. Uh, put gravel in alley behind Sloan Church, did GIS mapping, swept streets. Put up flags, took down, I don't know, took down the flowers, cleaned up the baseball field. That was kind of a mess from the storm and I did clean up the infield today, got a bunch of the weeds out of there.
Is the batting cage okay or is it?
We're gonna have to fix, there's gonna be some supports on there they're gonna have to fix.
Is that still like under inch, uh, warranty?
Well, the baseball, I think that was, wasn't that the baseball?
Oh, okay.
At schools.
Yeah.
Finished the electric on Wood Street. I went through all the alleys with the grader today. Basically did two days worth of locating. Carried electric service on North Main, finished service on South Clark. That one on North Main was from a storm, the storm also. Cut down Ron's tree. Hooked up Fields Electric. Remote, removed pole on Grill Spec, picked up paint in Orange City, got paint sprayer parts in Orange City. Loaded the, uh, step van on trailer, got rid of that, cop car is gone, the ninety-one pumper's gone, the digger truck is gone. I may have been what's called, right, some man what's called.
Do you, where did the, all, did they go to different places like, or are they all, all on person?
Some of the stuff's going to Nebraska, some of the stuff's going to Kentucky.
Wow.
Some of it's going to Missouri.
Have you been down to look at behind Dallas yet?
No, I was waiting for the cops to get out.
Any other questions for Kelly? List. Okay. Mr. Bremer? Check that for us.
Um, since someone's first, if you can, now we're actually in the twenty-eight.
It's exciting news.
Do we have to do something on the council meeting for that or does it just go back to that place?
Yeah, we, we took it out.
Okay.
We have canceled it.
The last time we did the twenty-eight, built it in, so we didn't have to keep doing that.
Right.
Okay.
And he's completely done and able to work constantly, right, or back and forth? So.
All right, we don't, any else, Mary? Aye, come, okay, we don't have Brian here today, or Lori, we do have Matt, do we have a report from Matt today?
Yeah, um, well, I had submitted stuff for the meeting that wasn't, um, for approving the hiring of a clerk, which apparently didn't make the.
We don't have to approve your hiring of a clerk.
No, we don't have to approve it. You just have to let.
So, we're hiring a clerk.
I did put, I did put your minute, yeah, your computer, yeah. Your boards.
I was nervous because that's my first time hiring a clerk. Um, okay, well, then that's awesome, uh, so we're hiring a clerk, Don Hancock, um, to come in for eight to twelve hours. Uh, generally it'll be eight hours, twelve hours, we'll make that a weekend. We're just shorthanded as the season shifts and some of our other employees have other jobs during the school year. So, um, this becomes our busier season as we do our after school programs and have to keep things stacked, so. And, um, do our six month reviews and you guys have the notes on that. And tomorrow is the start of our fall programming for after school, so there'll be lots of kids out and lots of excitement and, yeah. Things are moving ahead.
And I think, uh, Michelle, you were gonna work on that insurance thing for them, or did you do that already?
I had it done for them.
Okay. So that you get that, you know, free insurance, we just want you to sign that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Get that in your file.
Yeah, that's no problem.
If anybody comes in to check anything.
Yeah.
That is covered.
And then you need to fill your role on your library board, there's the whole.
Yes, and we're still.
Ordinance.
Still looking. But that has to be approved. Yeah.
There we go, library board, page fifty-nine, consult that one here, what you need to do for, uh, bringing that forward. All right. Any other questions for Matt regarding his report? Is it the library? Okay, we have, uh, Mr. Fish and I have quit in tonight, uh, he says he will get back to us hopefully by eighteen, have some info information. Any committees met, and then anything to say?
I just have a question, um, the, the nuisance, I guess, like Steve and I are supposed to be on that, but no, I don't know if we still are or we aren't, I don't know. Who follows up with the nuisances, I guess, whoever sent some out, I guess.
Well, that's what we talked about when they said that, you know, if you and Steve wanna have that list, you know, because we got one from Harper's, to check if they've done what Wendy sent the letters out.
There's just, there's just so many of them to follow up on.
I just, Steve and I don't even do like, because we, the last thing we talked about, like Brenda was going out and doing them, so.
I think you just happened to see some, did you?
Yeah. And sent some out and then we've given Michelle a list or whatever, but there's just not as many and a lot of them, I mean, there's, I don't know. Some people know we're on the nuisances and some of us don't, so I guess we, I guess just on the nuisance committee, I just wanna know, is that Steve's nice job? What's our role or is it anybody against sending, like giving Michelle a list and anybody's, and then we're sending them out, I guess? And then who's supposed to follow up, I guess, that's just the only.
Well, I think it's the committee, you would be the follow ups, because, you know, we can't really hand it over to Kelly and the guys.
No, and I don't, no, I just didn't know, like, because we didn't, I haven't given.
And that's my feelings.
We haven't given Michelle, I guess, a list, probably like a month.
But you got a bunch of them from Charlie and, um.
Right, and those all went out and.
Yep, so, but then, there's certain days on there.
Right.
So that we don't follow up on.
So, that's what, 'cause, you know, we didn't obviously know that they went out, I guess, but, so that's why it's hard to know. Who's supposed to follow up and stuff, so.
Yeah, maybe she can just email you or.
Well, I did disclose it last week.
You called us about it, yeah.
Yeah, and then I sent Steve a copy and I'm gonna give you a copy of, um, the spreadsheet that's, that's going. So, for.
I'm just trying to track them.
He might have given that to, put it in my mailbox, I think, yeah, 'cause they know that's on vacation.
Yes, other than you, you can submit them and now we don't have just the monthly mow situation, so that is now free at any point when they are over the eight inches or whatever, you have that and then, um.
Okay. So, does like Kelly go and post the mowing or is that like the nuisance committee, how is that supposed to go? I guess, how would you prefer?
You don't even have to post anymore.
Okay, so we can just tell you to go mow this person?
After they've already received a letter and then.
He's got to receive one.
Right, they have to see, okay. Okay, that's just more, and then I guess Steve and I will make sure we follow up.
Well, they have fifteen mows or thirty days.
They don't even have that.
Well, they only have that, oh.
Yes, we had fifteen days or thirty days, except for mowing, they don't even have that. Remember now, there's not three days, five days, whatever is in that letter, um, and then.
We usually try and do any of the mowing stuff, give it to them on like Fridays, so they got the weekend to do it and then.
And then Monday, yeah, okay.
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 And then we do take citizen, I mean, they do take calls and visits from people who want to, you know, explain a situation that is in their neighborhood or that they're bothered by, so those also get handed in a lot of times, they're already on this list that Alex has, so.
Okay, so I guess when Steve gets back, I guess we can follow up and then.
Get a new one.
We'll get a new one or something, okay.
As he was left.
All right.
Yeah, Michelle can just keep getting you the, whatever, she sends out letters, gets you a copy.
Yeah.
So you know the addresses and.
Okay.
The dates.
You know, and I don't. Or can you maybe just give us the addresses and like, Steve and I go drive around and tell you which ones to send and which ones not to?
Yeah, 'cause Alex has got a great way of tracking them, I think it's been helpful to see and then she puts a date and what, any other notes, 'cause sometimes people will call back and say, I need longer writing.
Right, or I can't do that.
Yeah, 'cause she even puts on here like weeds or John it is.
Okay, so like even if we could be, and then we can go around and be like, oh, let's, you know, maybe not send them all, maybe just pick the like worst ones, you know, that, or something, so we're not sending so many nuisances out at a time, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The last batch was that eight, nine or eight sixteen, whichever.
Yeah, and there was twenty, it's about twenty letters.
Oh, wow, okay.
And then to try to follow up on your twenty of those.
So, I just didn't know who was following up, if that was our job and all that, so that's why I just wanted some clarification. Thank you.
Questions? Yes, he's a work in progress, he's got a sign, he's not very slow. Yell that for putting people on the list, you yell that for not making a list, you yell that for having a bad list? Yell that. Uh, so, okay, that's committees, our next meeting will be on Monday, active Monday, no more holidays, September eighteenth at five thirty. Any other council comments?
Yeah. These south windows here were leaking bad when we had that heavy rain. We probably need to get those looked back and the door, there's gotta be somebody that knows.
Can figure it out.
Can figure it out how to fix it, because we've had how many people walk in it's.
She did research and find that in twenty twenty, the roof had been repaired and some rime roofing, so we maybe call them back and see if they can.
Someone else do the shingles on the roof and we had a rime roofing do the flat roof there.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have, I mean, it still breaks through the door, so.
It's gushing, they said.
And then back, yeah.
With the flat roof, so.
Well, it is, but I, and I think that's even getting really. Yeah, the wood. Looking bad, the woods looking really.
Perimeter, whatever you wanna call it.
Yeah, it's really deteriorating the way it looks to me, so it might have to, I don't know if that's gotta be replaced or just needs to be painted or. But I don't know who wants to start looking for, I mean, I don't know how busy our carpenters around here are. A lot of people are doing roofs since the hail and stuff, I know.
Yeah, if anyone has any great names to get to Michelle to reach out or if you wanna reach out and see if they're available or interested, then.
Well, I think maybe call that nurse guy, that O'Brien County and see what he said, or O'Brien was called. Roofing and see what he says.
They have to be solutions.
And after, tell him that came through, though, I mean, he, I don't know if you remember, it's a place old enough, but, but it came through the windows now, not just the door. 'Cause that was where it was almost before. And if he has no time, then we start looking for some good people.
Yeah.
To start, maybe get it done this fall before the snow comes.
You can start looking for someone.
Yep.
All right, anything else? Property here.
I'll make the motion whenever you know.
All right, Lexi.
I'll second.
And Carol is saying a second. Does anyone have anything to prevent an adjournment? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. Waiting adjournance, it's thirty-three PM.
Holy cow.
Wow.
It's gonna go down in history.
Whiplash from that fast one.